Good evening, everybody. We're going to go ahead and call to order the County Planning Commission for May 6, 2024. If you'll please call to roll.
Yes, Commissioners Borja.
Here.
Conklin.
Here.
Corona Sabaniano.
Here.
Devlin.
And Raythal.
Here.
And we do have our quorum.
If you all please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you'll please make the announcements for this evening.
The county fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. The commission does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. Seating may be limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis. To make an in-person public comment, please complete and submit a speaker request form and hand it to the clerk, and each individual will be invited to the podium to make a comment. Members of the public may feel free to send a written comment, which is distributed to commission members and filed in the record. Contact information is optional and should include the meeting date and agenda or off-agenda item number to be sent as follows. Email a comment to boardclerk@saccounty.gov or mail a comment to 700 H St., Suite 2450, Sacramento, California, 95814.
And that brings us to our contested portion of the agenda. If you'll please call item number one.
Yes, and your item number one this evening is for a development plan review. It's located at 3152nd Avenue at the south corner of the intersection of 52nd Avenue and Connector Street in the South Gate Industrial Park of the South Sacramento Community. And the environmental document is a mitigated negative declaration.
Okay. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm David Orelleros, Associate Planner. The planner assigned to the U.S. Cold Storage at South Gate Industrial Park project, which is a proposal for 26 new semi-truck parking stalls, site landscaping, and stormwater quality, and a stormwater-quality basin accessory to an existing 145,020-square-foot cold storage building. The site is located at 3152nd Avenue, at the intersection of Connector Street and 52nd Avenue, within the 52nd Avenue Neighborhood Preservation Area of the South Sacramento Community. The subject parcel is currently developed, once again, with a 145,000-square-foot cold storage building with eight truck parking stalls, 20 loading dock stalls, and 50 standard auto stalls, and two accessible auto stalls. The southern 250 feet of the parcel is currently undeveloped and is the area in which the project is proposed. Within the proposed, or within the project are 12 non-native trees, the majority of which are located along the southern property line boundary. So here we have the zoning map showing the M1, or Light Industrial Zoning District, along with the 52nd Avenue NPA, or Neighborhood Preservation Area ordinance, which the southern 250 feet of the subject property is located within. Surrounding land uses include processing and warehousing to the north, a mobile home community within the city of Sacramento to the south, which is really the reasoning for the 52nd Avenue NPA, a truck terminal to the east, and train tracks for the Western Pacific Railroad within the city of Sacramento to the west. So some site history. On November 30, 1978, a variance was granted to reduce the required front yard setback to 14 feet 8 inches to construct a pump house. The pump house does remain on-site today. Construction on the site dates to 1979 with the construction of a 75,000-square-foot industrial building, which has had an approximately 70,000-square-foot addition between 1985 and 1995. So the entitlement associated with this project is a development plan review, which is to allow for 26 new truck parking stalls pursuant to the 52nd Avenue Neighborhood Preservation Area ordinance. A little background on the 52nd Avenue Neighborhood Preservation Area ordinance. It was adopted by the Board of Supervisors in December of 1978 and applies to the property within 250 feet of the industrial residential interface along the southern boundary of the properties along the south side of 52nd Avenue. It was created recognizing that the industrial and residential-zoned property are juxtaposed in a manner which would not provide the necessary buffering provided by standard zoning regulations. Recognizing this juxtaposition, it prescribed specific development standards for the area, including a 75-foot landscape area between the industrial and residential interface planted with trees spaced 30 feet on center, capable of reaching 30 feet in height at maturity, a 8-foot-tall solid wall at the interface, and a maximum height of 40 feet. I would also note that the 40-foot height limit is not applicable to this project as it is only limited to flat work, including the parking landscaping and water-quality basin. So the NPA also requires a development plan review for any development within its boundaries with the required finding that the, for approval, that the development not create adverse noise, visual, air quality, health, or safety impacts on adjoining residential uses. An initial study was prepared pursuant to CEQA, which analyzed impacts to a variety of topics, including air quality, hydrology and water quality, aesthetics, noise, and hazards and hazardous materials. The initial study concluded that the project would result in a less-than-significant impact with the implementation of mitigation measures, and a mitigated negative declaration has been prepared. Here we have the site plan showing the area-of-work context of the site. And here we have a zoomed-in view of the site plan showing the proposed truck stalls. I would also note that while 26 stalls are proposed, there are eight existing stalls that require removal as part of this project for access to the southern portion of the property, resulting in a net increase of 18 stalls across the site. And here is the landscape plan. This has been developed with input from the Sacramento Air Quality Management District and uses species and strategies from its landscape guidance for improving air quality in your roadways guide. While this project is not adjacent to roadway, to a roadway, the Air Quality Management District has determined that the species and strategies contained in this guide would be applicable and appropriate in reducing the pollution from any exposure originating from the truck parking use. The South Sacramento CPAC did meet in December, or in November of 2020 and recommended denial of the requested entitlements based on the concern of air pollution originating from the project and its impact on public health for the southern-adjacent residential properties, as well as a high concentration of industrial uses and truck traffic in the vicinity. The DRAK also met on November 10, 2022 and recommended that the project be found in substantial compliance with the countywide design guidelines. So some key points. The project does comply with all applicable development standards of the Neighborhood Preservation Area. It's consistent with the general plan and South Sacramento Community Plan and buffering of the industrial and residential uses pursuant to the standards contained within the NPA. It is also consistent with the environmental justice elements policies related to expanding the tree canopy. While the project does propose the removal of seven non-native trees resulting in the loss of approximately 2,200 square feet of non-native canopy, the project proposes a replacement canopy of 27,898 square feet. Environmental Justice Policy 23 calls for an equitable tree canopy in EJ communities guided by an implementation measure which states that during CEQA review, tree impact shall be mitigated by the requirement of an additional 25% canopy for a total replacement of 125% of the canopy removed. The proposed replacement canopy far exceeds that requirement. The environmental justice element also calls for an increase in job opportunities in environmental justice communities. It is important to note that the existing industrial building on-site is currently vacant. The applicant has indicated that the proposed additional truck parking is necessary to bring the property into alignment with current market needs for cold storage facilities to secure a tenant. While no tenants have been secured at this time, it is reasonable to believe that additional jobs would be created once a tenant is secured. As earlier stated, the project has been reviewed through an initial study pursuant to CEQA, which identified no significant environmental concerns. The South Sacramento CPAC did recommend denial of the project based on the concern of air quality impacts from the project. However, it is important to note that at the time of the CPAC's review, air quality analysis had not yet been performed, and that subsequent to the CPAC meeting, air quality analysis has been performed, which determined a less-than-significant impact to air quality with the incorporation of standard best-management practices related to basic construction emissions control added as mitigation. The CPAC also noted the high concentration of industrial uses and truck traffic in the South Sacramento Community. Staff notes that the project would not be introducing an additional industrial use or expansion of the square footage of the existing building, but rather creating accessory truck parking to assist in the marketability of an existing vacant building. The DRAK did also review the project and found the project to be appropriate given its context with the residential adjacent. With that, staff does recommend that the planning commission determine the environmental analysis prepared pursuant to CEQA is adequate and complete, adopt the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and approve development plan, and approve the development plan review subject to findings and conditions provided in attachment two. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions, and we are joined by Forrest Chaney of the applicant team.
Thank you. Questions for staff this evening?
Just looking into the environmental analysis, you know, there was some discussion about how this project would not have a net increase of VMT, and staff analysis says that this is because of it's a VMT-efficient area. Does that mean that just because that neighborhood has historically had low VMTs, therefore staff would not even look to see whether an increase of stalls would generate more truck traffic or rounds of traffic for the local neighborhoods?
Yeah, so there's a couple of things at play here. One, VMT-efficient areas are areas where there's a mix of uses, and it's not going to generate high volumes of trips, or it's, there's a lot of things nearby. So if there are trips, there are shorter trips. In this case, I think it's really because they're not adding square footage to the existing use, or the existing building, rather. But that's generally why, yep.
They're not adding square footage, but there would be a net increase of truck stalls. So one could theoretically say that more truck stalls would mean more capacity, therefore more trucks can travel in the local roads, or am I misreading that?
Not necessarily, because they're still going to have the same amount of space in the existing building for the storage of goods. So there's not an anticipated increase in the amount of goods that are coming through there, in other words.
Because the space is the same, yep.
Right, right. So if they were expanding the use with additional square footage, then we would anticipate that there would be an increase, but...
But we're also expanding the amount of parking spaces that could be maximized, right? Like with logistics, it's not just the amount of space that you can store, but rather the trucks that have an offload, or like a load board, or like an empty load board, things like that matter. Was that at all looked at? Or did we just generally, because it's an efficient area, we didn't look kind of further down that list?
I don't know if the environmental coordinator has anything to add on this.
I can chime in. Julie Newton, Environmental Coordinator. So as David mentioned, there's a couple factors that play into the VMT piece for this project. VMT-efficient areas. So the county's traffic analysis guidelines includes a handful of screening criteria. One of those is for those projects that are within what's considered a VMT-efficient area, no additional VMT analysis is warranted. So generally speaking, those VMT-efficient areas are going to be in your, you know, more urban core areas where trips are not as long as, say, you know, your more far-reaching area. Another aspect to this project is we take into consideration the baseline, which I think is what David's alluding to. This is an existing facility, an existing warehouse that would, you would assume there could be a maximum operational capacity with this, with the facility. This particular project, the intent is adding, you know, additional storage to, sorry, storage for parking of trailers, not increasing the operational capacity of the building itself. So I see where your, you know, thought process is going. If you have additional stalls, could there be additional trips? Because a VMT analysis wasn't warranted, we didn't get into that level of detail, but you could assume that you already have a baseline assumption of VMT associated with the operation of that building, with the intent being that this project is really adding for the storage of trailers on-site.
Understood. My only concern is that I think this specific neighborhood has been identified by CalOHAS as a disadvantaged community per a lot of the other CEQA and SB 743-related guidelines, localized pollution, things like that. So if we are kind of just having a blanket statement just because it's a, it's in a VMT-efficient zone and wouldn't go add further kind of detail to narrative, even though, yeah, we're increasing operational, I think that truck traffic and micro trips may not have been adequately addressed in the analysis of the CEQA, because you're increasing parking stalls, therefore you could, one could argue that it's, you know, you're also increasing use and capacity. So it's like capacity-inducing trips.
And perhaps to add on the piece of air quality and GHG emissions, those were something that were modeled separately aside from the VMT analysis. Both air quality and GHG concerns came underneath our screening thresholds. And the project, again, you know, we wouldn't expect to see significant increase in localized pollutants on the site because it's, you know, it's intended for the storage of vehicles. And I believe David can confirm that we also have condition to ensure no idling of vehicles that would be in proximity to the residences.
Correct, yeah. I believe that is condition six.
Okay. Thank you.
So in the analysis, I'm trying to get a better understanding if there would be any created new sources of substantial light with this parking lot. I would imagine there's going to be new light poles put up to kind of provide illumination, especially for evening use, and wanted to get a sense if there were any spotlights or floodlights or any other sources of illumination that would potentially shine towards or directly into the community nearby. As I understand it, there's some probably 18-foot light poles, but there's an assumption of maybe 24-foot light poles, and I'm just curious with the height, where that light's going, and if there's impacts to the community.
So those aren't proposed at this time. That's analysis in the future. They potentially could do that, and that, the 18-foot is consistent with the zoning code requirements. So I believe that analysis was performed as like a worst-case scenario if they do decide to install lights, but at this time, no lights are proposed.
Okay. But there is a, I would imagine, a concern about light pollution impacting that community nearby, the residential community.
Correct, yeah. You know, the zoning code does require that lighting be pointed away from any residential as well. So if they were to come in at a future date, they, with lighting, they would be subject to that. But we do not have like a photo-metrics analysis of that at this time, just given that we didn't have the lighting proposed.
And I know it was addressed earlier that their condition of not having any vehicles idle, but are there going to be any loading areas that would kind of result in significant noise to that community nearby?
Not within this area. Adjacent to the building, there are existing loading areas on the eastern side of that building, but, and I can go back to kind of better depict that. So it's kind of far, but, right, kind of there. Apologies, it's kind of a zoomed-out view. But really, their area of work, too, is this southern 250 feet that is subject to that NPA, and in that area, they're not proposing any kind of loading or unloading.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Other questions for staff this evening? Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I'll invite the applicant up to address the commission, if you'd like.
Chair, we do have two applicants, one for each item, so would you like to get them sworn in at the same time?
Yeah, we'll get both applicants sworn in at once, if you want to go ahead and stand up and raise your right hand.
Thank you so much. Raise your right hands. Any appropriate responses I do. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give the commission is the truth, so help you, God? If you do not swear, do you so affirm?
I do.
And so when you go to the podium, state your name for the record and make the statement I have been sworn. Thank you.
My name is Forrest Chaney. I represent LBA Realty, and I have been sworn. Apologize, I'll be reading from my phone tonight as we have some relevant background here. Thank you for your opportunity to present our project as well as your consideration of its approval this evening. LBA is a private real estate investment group established in 1991 and headquartered in Irvine, California. We focus on investing in commercial office and industrial properties, and our primary investors include state, local, fire, and police employee pension funds, as well as sovereign wealth funds. On behalf of our participants, our real estate portfolio includes more than 400 properties encompassing more than 100 million square feet across the United States. We are a vertically-integrated organization with in-house investment management, property management, construction, and development expertise. We have been an active investor in Sacramento since 2021, and on behalf of our participants, we currently own 16 different facilities totaling more than 750,000 square feet that are the homes to more than 40 businesses in the greater Sacramento area. With that, these properties include industrial, logistics, business parks, and cold storage facilities, notably the facility we are discussing tonight. With that, thank you again for your time this evening and your consideration of our project, as well as its approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for the applicant this evening?
So just one, one quick question. So there's no, as was mentioned in the report and the presentation, there's no tenant currently planned to come in? Like, what does that look like in order to get a tenant in there, and how many jobs is this going to bring?
I am not familiar enough with the operation of the facility to speak to the number of jobs. However, we have been marketing the building since we acquired it and the previous owner vacated, and have made numerous improvements to its mechanical plan in order to help drive leasing efforts.
Okay. Of the sites that you mentioned just now, how many employees work there?
That I do not know, off the top of my head.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, sir. Quick question. So if I'm understanding correctly, it would be more of a, like a longer-term parking for truck stalls, and it wouldn't be like a day-in, day-out? Or are you all going to actively manage, like, freight load boards on-site as well? Or how do you envision the use of the net 18 stalls?
Our intention for this expansion of the parking lot would be overflow truck storage to be used by the tenant.
Thank you.
You've reviewed the conditions of approval and are in agreement with them?
Yes.
Any further questions for the applicant this evening? All right. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you very much.
And we'll move on to public comment.
There are no public comments.
All right, we'll go ahead and close public comments, and we'll move on to deliberation.
Well, I'd just like to say, I mean, the way I'm envisioning this is, they've got an 8-foot concrete masonry wall being proposed with a 75-foot landscaping area in order to create some visual and auditory buffer. And I do believe that, you know, being, that that would tremendously enhance the property's marketability, and as I understand it, it's a cold storage area for presumably food, and getting tenants in there and being able to better use that space brings a tremendous amount of economic development and jobs to the area. When it's appropriate, I would move to approve that there's a substantial information here that the environmental analysis prepared for the CEQA is adequate and complete, and the MMRP should be adopted, and we approve the design review when it's appropriate. Mr. Chair.
Happy to entertain that motion now. All right. Any further discussion, or second? I'd be happy to second the staff recommendation motion. I think the Neighborhood Preservation exists for a reason. It's been around for, doing some quick math in my head, 46 years, and that the board at that time saw this as a potential, and set up guidelines to allow this to have minimal impact on the residential neighborhood. So I get it that there's some pushback on it, but I think this has been foreseen for a long time, and it is the right of that property owner to fit into that, so. Further comments before I call for a vote?
I appreciate the staff on kind of engaging and answering my questions. I think kind of moving forward, we just have to be somewhat careful and call out if a project may or may not induce some sort of demand, and sometimes that can kind of get lost on a lot of like environmental vernaculars, whether it's you're increasing some sort of truck traffic, or in here, it's just kind of longer-term storage. Because in, like, when I read this, and I went back and forth twice, I said, well, you're going to park more trucks, therefore there would be more trucks that would be there locally, and that there's neighborhoods right across the train tracks. But seeing that, like the staff mentioned, it's not going to be increasing the operations, I'd be happy to support this. I think I would just probably note and maybe work with staff after the meeting and offline to just try to look at, you know, just because something is in a VMT-efficient area doesn't mean that it's necessarily like net efficient, because there may be projects that may or may not merit the post-SB 743 guidelines by SAICOG that may fall under the cracks, just because it's already within an area that has an accepted amount of vehicular traffic. I don't want to go to like the nuances of this, but when you're adding a lot of like shorter trips in a given neighborhood, there's a science that says that, yeah, there would be some sort of impact, whether it's local pollution or just traffic safety. But I don't question the environmental analysis, and I just want to make sure that we were thorough in that discussion.
Thank you. All right, please call to roll for staff recommendation.
Commissioners Borja.
Yes.
Conklin.
Yes.
Corona Sabaniano.
Yes.
And Raythal.
Yes.
And the motion carries with those members present.
Thank you. Please call item number two.
So your item number two this evening is for a use permit, special development permit and design review, and it is located at 6901 7th Street in the Realinda-Alvera community. And the environmental document is a negative declaration.
Hello, my name's Austin Chan. I'm the project manager for this project. This is FirstNet AT&amp;T Public Safety Wireless Communication Facility. The project is located at 6901 7th Street, at the corner of O Street and 7th Street in the Realinda-Alvera community. The site is currently developed with two industrial buildings and a defunct grain silo Sorry about that. The project is located in the downtown Realinda SPA. Some of the adjacent uses, there's a vacant lot to the north, a contractor yard to the south, and single-family residential uses to the east and west. The properties to the northwest and south are also in the downtown Realinda SPA, and the adjacent parcels to the east are in the RD5 zoning district. The project site is currently being used for storage of heavy industrial equipment, small industrial equipment, and vehicles which are located throughout the site. I will be coming back to some of the site and entitlement history. The entitlement request is a use permit to allow for a new wireless communication facility, a special development permit to deviate from the height where the maximum allowed is 55 feet. The tower is proposed to be 75 feet. Deviation to the separation from public right-of-way where the minimum required separation is 25 feet. The equipment enclosure is 6 feet from the public right-of-way. And lastly, deviation to separation from Group 1 zoned properties where the requirement of separation is three times the height of the tower, which in this case is 225 feet. As proposed, the tower is 125 feet from the north and 116 feet from the west Group 1 zoned properties. And lastly, a design review to determine substantial compliance with the Sacramento County And lastly, a design review to determine substantial compliance with the Sacramento Countywide Design Guidelines. An initial study and mitigated negative declaration was prepared and released to the pub for public review on April 8, 2024. Some of the impacts discussed include aesthetics, noise, water quality, and hazardous materials. The project would result in less-than-significant impacts with implementation of mitigation measures. Those mitigation measures include basic emission control practices and unanticipated discovery for cultural resources. Here is the site plan. The equipment enclosure and tower are located on the northwest side of the parcel. Unlike some other wireless communication facilities, the tower is not located within that equipment enclosure. Staff worked with the applicant to try and get the tower further away from that public right-of-way, so it now does meet that separation requirement, though the enclosure does not, just due to some of the constrictions of the current use of the site, including like storage of facilities and circulation on the parcel. The applicant is proposing this tower to enhance emergency services for first responders. Here's the compound plan. The equipment enclosure would be surrounded by a six-foot chain-link fence with slats, and this is a 33-by-33-foot leased area. This is the elevations. The applicant is proposing a 75-foot tower. It would total to 80 feet with the additional five feet for a lightning rod. The application originally came in as a mono-broadleaf steeling design. When working with staff, we did request for looking at alternatives to that steeling. The applicant decided that this would be the least visually impactful due to the industrial uses on the site. Additionally, we felt that the mono-eucalyptus might not meet the context of the parcel due to lack of trees in the immediate vicinity of the area, the extra bulk that resulted in the stealth design. And just due to the tall cranes that are used on the site, the plane pole is used. The applicant prepared three photo simulations of the tower. This is the site. Looking onto the site, there are cranes, and this is from the west, from O Street. This is from the adjacent residential area, looking northeast from Sixth Street. And lastly, this is looking southeast from Front Street, and you can see the grain silo building behind it. The applicant also prepared three coverage maps. The first will be without a tower, the current coverage, and then a 45-foot and 75-foot tower. The blue here, which is mostly shown, shows reliable coverage outdoors only and less reliable indoor coverage. There's also some yellow which shows reliable coverage in transit and less reliable indoor coverage. This would be proposed 45-foot tower. As you can see, there's much more reliable coverage in green, which is reliable service both indoors and outdoors. And lastly is the coverage map at 71 feet. Though there is not a huge increase in coverage from the 45-foot tower, the applicant is requesting the additional height in order to allow for co-location with other service providers. The project went to the Design Review Advisory Committee on December 14, 2023, and recommends the planning commission find the project in substantial compliance with design guidelines. The Realinda, Alberta Community Planning Advisory Council met on January 24, 2024, and recommends the planning commission approve the requested entitlements. The proposed project has been found to be consistent with the general plan and zoning code as conditioned. The project is compatible with surrounding zoning and land uses. There are no significant environmental concerns. The DrAC recommends finding the project in substantial compliance with design guidelines. The cell tower is consistent in design with the existing industrial uses on the subject parcel. The project complies with the standards for limiting public exposure to radio frequency energy, and the project provides additional cellular coverage to support the surrounding community and would enhance emergency services for first responders in the community. Additionally, there are existing code violations on the property. There is a building code violation for electrical without a building permit. The applicant is currently working with building inspectors to remedy this code violation. Planning and environmental review staff recommends the planning commission approve the following: determine that the environmental analysis prepared pursuant to CEQA is adequate and complete. Approve the use permit subject to findings and conditions. Approve the special development permit subject to findings and conditions. And find the project in substantial compliance with design guidelines subject to findings and conditions. That'll conclude my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions for staff?
Yes. Could you dive a little bit more into the code violations? I'm, I'm, I understand the property owner is working with building inspectors to remedy these code, but I'm, it says here there's a history of code enforcement violations on the site. And I'd like to kind of get a little greater clarity on what those are. And I believe there's a separate open case. So if you could just dive into those a little bit more, appreciate it.
Yeah, there have been previous code violations. There are currently, there's one code violation and a building violation. The code violation is for a change in the use on the site, and the building violation is for electrical fencing, an addition of electrical, as well as other additions to the building on the site without a building permit. I did reach out to the building inspector working on this project, and the applicant, or the property owner, I should say, is working with them to try and get the building permit approved.
Okay, but the, so in the analysis says there's a history of code enforcement violations. What is that history?
I believe that history is changes to the buildings over time. Perhaps the applicant can provide some additional information on those.
Okay.
Code violations?
Let's, let's hold off on that for now. We'll stick with staff questions, and then we'll move to the applicant's presentation. You mentioned use of the site is different, though. Could you, could you elaborate a little bit more on that, or is that an applicant question also?
Perhaps the applicant can expand, but the site has been used as an industrial parcel since 2014. However, the specific use of that parcel has changed over time. This has not been remedied yet, so I believe the property owner is still working on this code violation. But the current use includes the large cranes that are on the site and various equipment being stored, and I believe that equipment has changed over time. But it was cited as a code violation.
So the zoning right now on the property is not industrial?
So the zoning on the parcel currently is SPA, the downtown Realinda SPA. Previously to the SPA being adopted, it was adopted in 2015. The parcel was an industrial parcel at M1.
And that industrial use was present when the SPA was adopted?
Yes.
Could you go back to your slides where you had the entitlement history? I may have glanced over that. One more back, I think, isn't it?
This is community context, but this would be the entitlement history. So according to the SPA, if the industrial use was adopted prior to the adoption of the SPA, it would not need a certificate of non-conforming use and continue to be used. However, this specific use, I think, is still being discussed.
Any other background on that? If I'm looking over at staff just from...
We don't have any background beyond what's in the staff report.
Yeah. Thank you. Other questions for staff before we move to the applicant's presentation this evening? All right. Thank you. At this time, we'll invite the applicant up.
Yeah, please.
Mitch, can you please queue up the applicant presentation for item number two?
Good evening, good chair, Rathal. Commissioners, my name is Mike McLaughlin. I'm with the Western Fire Chiefs. I'm the retired fire chief with Consumers Fire in Elk Grove, and has pledged to be back working in Sacramento County. I have been sworn in. So, and thank you for the opportunity tonight to present this FirstNet Public Safety Broadband Telecommunications Facility to you for your consideration. I will get to your questions about some of the entitlement questions that were raised. Just touching on a couple of things first. I think it's just important for context of what are we trying to achieve? So following 9/11, as part of the after-action report, it found really nationwide, but specifically obviously in Manhattan and Washington DC, that the impacts of 9/11 and the complete saturations of telecommunications networks made it impossible for first responders to communicate. And so subsequently, moving forward in 2012, Congress enacted the Middle Class Tax Relief and Job Creation Act, which created the FirstNet Authority, as well as dedicating Band 14 in the cellular spectrum specifically for the use of first responders. So fire, law, emergency medical services, hospitals, certain aspects of school, emergency management functions within cities and counties, the people that must be able to communicate when an emergency arises. It requires a special SIM card in the phone to be able to access and use it, and so there won't be competition with typical commercial carriers, if you will. In creating the system and rolling it out, two options were pondered, one of which was to build the system from the ground up on a nationwide platform. As you can imagine how daunting and costly that would be. And it was decided to do an RFP and created a one-of-a-kind contract for a 25-year to build and operate the FirstNet system. And the contract is a public-private partnership with AT&amp;T. And the work we're trying to do now is basically fill the gaps in coverage. The partnership for us as Western Fire Chiefs, when I was a sitting fire chief working here in Sacramento County, I represented the state of California on the Western Fire Chiefs Association Board of Directors, and we were intimately involved for a long time in trying to advocate and push forward getting the build-out of FirstNet, the broadband network, for the reasons that I just mentioned, which is how it describes the nexus of why I'm standing before you this evening and doing the work that we believe is essentially important in trying to make sure that our first responders have the communication tools that they need. In terms of coverage, in looking at the Realinda, Alberta area, this is a culmination of all carriers in the area. So, and what I mean by all carriers, that's AT&amp;T, FirstNet, Verizon, and T-Mobile. In this case, green is good, means good indoor coverage, you know, strong signal. Black is bad. And so obviously, there's a significant need for a facility in this area, and there's only one tower within a one-mile radius of the, our proposed facility, and it does not have any ability to co-locate on it, which makes the need for a new tower a must in order to be able to provide the coverage that we're trying to do. We did alternate site analysis, but as you can see from this aerial map, that the preponderance of the area is residential, and our goal obviously is to stay afar from residential as we possibly can for, for one, for the setbacks through zoning, but also through the optics and public support and push, right? And so with this, we really only had two options in the particular area, one of which was at 701 L Street at the very bottom of your screen, and then in the center of the green, the center of the screen, the green dot, is the, the subject site and the proposed location for this evening. Height? Wow, that is an interesting change. Yeah, the, the tower, I guess, is vertical for whatever reason the picture here isn't. But I think what's, what's important are the numbers off the left. I think with staff, they provided the vertical post of the monopole design tower. And the reason we're asking for a 75-foot tower, it was, it was, it would put the center of the radio for FirstNet at 71 feet and allow for the ability to co-locate for other providers so we can consolidate utilities into one footprint. And the adjacent building is approximately 40 feet tall. And so in order to be able to clear that building with a signal, that this would be the height necessary in order to provide that coverage, in order to provide those co-location opportunities. The existing coverage, as I mentioned, the, the left is the AT&amp;T map that staff shared. The right is out of a system that's known as UCLA that just provides it a little bit different. The yellow dots you see are AT&amp;T phones trying to ping for a signal. And so the more dots there are in an area, the more common those particular areas are trying to seek and seek out coverage. What we're proposing, as we mentioned, will completely saturate this area and provide the coverage necessary to give it up. With the community meeting in January, we presented in, in Realinda, some of the community members there were asking support by the, the board to, as a result of them not having any cell coverage and working out of their homes. And something that we've come to learn that 70% of all homes no longer have wired landlines, so only 30% do. And in 2021, 87% of all 911 calls in the United States came from wireless phones. And so, you know, the key to being able to not only contact your 911 provider, but be able to receive emergency notifications to be able to have that connectivity. As we talked about with the project of what we're looking at. And then Commissioner Conklin, on your question, in terms of the history on the property and having, I've met with the, the owner just a couple of times, but the majority of, when we talk about the history of multiple code issues, they were with the previous owner, owners than the current owner. There, there's definitely the, the current case that Ms. Chan spoke of this evening that's currently being worked through. But when it referenced looking at the, the parcel number and looking back at the history, many of those were with previous owners. And so they're just ultimately tie-in at the bigger piece. At least, that's the way it's been presented and shared with me, and that they were some time ago. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Can you talk a little bit about the, the area? I'm glad we've moved it away from the northern property line. But can you talk a little bit about what restrictions there are from moving it further south? Or even looking at, you know, if we have these large grain towers that are sitting there in the center, I would think this would be really unobtrusive if we stacked it on top of those. Why would we, why would we not do that? Why would we construct a separate pole further away from the existing industrial uses on the property?
The challenge we have is, I think the word used was defunct, defunct towers. And it would, some of it would come down to engineering and the structural stability of the existing towers, and then how the antennas would be able to be connected and be able to work off of those towers. Additionally, we would have similar challenges with the height and the coverage, as I spoke of before, right? We, in order to have, a, a set of antennas needs 12 feet of vertical space. To have two providers, you need 24 feet of vertical space. Three providers would be 36 feet. And being able to put it on that tower would ultimately make, you know, obviously the lowest providers very low. But there would be a structural piece on, you know, very old silos that aren't currently being used as silos or maintained as silos. And so from a structural perspective, you know, that would be extremely problematic. For us, we've been working to try to push the, the tower. We've been working with staff to push the tower to a central location that kind of is the, the, I guess, to the, the greatest setback we can possibly get as you see from the, the shape of the parcel. The farther we move south, the more that it tapers in, then the closer we ultimately become from the types of properties that we're trying to have setbacks from. So it is definitely an interesting puzzle that we're working very carefully to try to navigate, and staff has been exceptional in, in working with us and informing us and trying to provide you... to provide you with the best possible solution.
So the height of those towers, just so I understand, are 40-foot? Is that, did I catch that right, or I'm...
Yeah, the current silos are approximately 40 feet in height. Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So I would imagine if we move closer to those silos, they're less of an obstruction to the signal? Is that fair to say?
A little bit. I mean, I'm not a ran engineer to speak to it specifically, but I know with the antennas being pointed outward, I don't know, being closer or further away would, it would impede one way or another.
Got it. So the only thing restricting us from moving further south is really proximity to the residential to the west? Is that...
Yeah, I know, I did speak to staff on that because I know the current location has adjusted over the last couple of months to be a better, more suitable piece, and so speaking from the technical side, if you'd like to speak to it, if you may.
Yeah, when working with the applicant, I think they did discuss with the property owner of moving it further south and with the least area, the 33 by 33 feet, just due to the use of the site, because there are drives through here so that there's connectivity throughout the site. There wasn't a suitable place to put it other than where it's at, so the compromise was to move the tower itself because it is smaller.
And there's no safety concerns over having the tower separated from, I guess we've just typically seen these, the access area and the fence is around the base of the tower. Now we're going to separate those two. I'm assuming kids can't access it anyway, like we can't get, having an extra fence or extra layer of protection, it really, what's inside that access is generators, backup power, I'm guessing?
Yeah, the main radios themselves, power, backup power, yes.
Transformers and generators.
Also, just to add, that that site is confined by a fence just for the current industrial use of the site.
Got it. And so the actual tower itself will have a fence around it, or it's just a tower?
It's just a tower.
These towers are completely slick-sided and, you know, three, four feet diameter. It'd take magic to try to scale or to do anything with one of those, and if they were going to do that, I don't think the fence would matter either, so.
Other questions for the applicant?
Yes. Thank you for the clarification as far as the history of the code enforcement. I presume staff's confirmed that those, that historical line of violations was with the previous property owner. There is an open code enforcement case for electrical fencing, and that's, and new electrical added without a building permit, and some issues related to safety covers and blank plates and plugs and switches, and that's in the process of being remedied, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I struggled initially with this because obviously, you know, I believe that wireless facilities, especially in this area, provide greater, kind of more robust coverage in the area specifically for first responders in the area. Dedicated brand of, dedicating Band 14 is obviously a benefit to the community, and while I felt that the environmental analysis was adequate and complete and the design guidelines were in compliance, I struggled with that, you know, approving a use permit or a special development permit with all these kind of violations to the, to the, to the area and the property there. But it seems like they're being addressed, and a bulk of this was from previous property owners, so I appreciate the clarification. Thank you.
Other questions for the applicant this evening? I totally appreciate that because I've argued that on multiple projects before with our, with our county council, and I appreciate that they're, they're being remedied. Any other questions? All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
At this time, we'll go ahead and open up public comment.
And no public comments.
All right, we'll go ahead and close public comment. I did have another question for staff that I just noticed. I believe this is Frost Supervisor, Supervisorial District. It says CERN on the agenda, and I literally just noticed it. I don't know if it matters in our noticing, but I just wanted to bring it up before we...
It is Frost.
It is Frost, but that's fine as far as the noticing. We notice with the address and everything else, so. I appreciate this being moved away from the northern property line. I appreciate staff working with the applicant to say, hey, this is an industrial site. We don't need to put up a giant fake tree that looks worse than a tower. And I appreciate the maintenance going forward on this. Industrial use will be substantially less than a large fake tree, so I'm supportive of the project, happy to move staff recommendation.
Second.
But I'll give people an opportunity to comment before we call a roll if anyone would like. All right, please call the roll.
Commissioners Borja.
Yes.
Conklin.
Yes.
Corona Savagnano.
Yes.
And Wraithall.
Yes.
And the motion carries with those members present.
Thank you so much. And we're moving on to the Planning Director's report.
Good evening, Commissioners. I do not have a really robust report at all for you tonight. The end.
All right, miscellaneous scheduling items. He's trying to get us out in under an hour. I appreciate that. All right, scheduling items, we want to talk next meeting or meetings after that?
I'd say, as always, let us know if you're anticipating to be absent. We do have a few items coming up.
Sounds good. Any Commissioners need to let staff know on the 20th or any meetings in June? All right, we'll move on to item number five, public comments.
And there are no public comments.
We're going to go ahead and adjourn at 6:27 PM. Have a great night, everybody.